Can everyone hear me okay? Yeah, okay, thanks. I apologize for being a little late. The select board has actually been in session since six o'clock, so we've been already busy. Just as a matter of notice, we have two tentative meetings set up Monday, October 19th in a regular session at 7:30 and Monday, October 26th in regular session at 7:30. We'll be determining which one of those that works for everyone's schedule and which one we need, but those are right now what we have in front of us. And I think that I'm seeing our members start to trickle in. While we do have a quorum, I think we're waiting for Susan Verdickio as well. I don't see her yet. And just to welcome everyone while I'm here. Joining me tonight is select board member Jackie Welch, Mariano Golubov, Amy Shapiro, Susan Verdickio will be joining us, town manager Lisa Wong is here, as well as our town engineer Beth Rudolph and Jen Murphy from the Board of Health. And we'll try to take the staff items as quickly as possible. And first, I'll take a motion under section B of our agenda to accept the donations to the Board of Health.
I move that we accept the donations through the Board of Health. I don't have them right in front of me in case we need to read those.
Sure. It's a, we do, yes, donation, the amount of $10,000. It's generously donated by the Winchester Hospital, Leahy Health, and it's be put towards COVID expenses and interface. So we accept that donation for the Board of Health with much gratitude.
Okay.
I'll take a roll call vote, all in favor, Jackie?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I don't see Susan quite yet, but motion carries unanimously four to zero. Lisa, if you're there, is there a particular order that we want to jump into for where we have staff present?
Sure. So Susan, just let me know she had to reboot her laptop, so hopefully she'll be coming in shortly.
Okay.
But we do have the Board of Health Director Jen Murphy here to discuss several items, and she's actually going to need to be made a panelist because she has a video she needs to share.
Yes, a panelist, I did make her one. Let me just double check.
Jen, thanks for coming in.
Jen, you want to start with the flu clinic updates?
She's muted.
Jen, you're muted, so we're trying to figure that out. It doesn't look like you're connected to audio.
Oh, which phone number? Which phone? Let me see. I'll get her.
Can you hear me?
Yes, there we go. Jen?
Jen? Sorry about that, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that.
So I'm not sure if you could hear us, but we were hoping you could start with the flu clinics.
Yes, so the Health Department has three flu clinics this fall. They're all at the Jank Center. The first one will be the Senior Flu Clinic, which will be this Wednesday. And all of the flu clinics this year are by appointment only, so we can control the crowd size within the facility. So again, the Senior Clinic is this Wednesday. I believe all the appointments are full at this point, however, we are making a contingency plan for seniors who miss that cutoff. But there are also two community clinics as well. So seniors who missed getting an appointment for our first clinic could always go to a community health clinic, one of our community clinics rather. However, I am trying to make a contingency plan to, so that they don't have to be inconvenienced by going to the, one of our larger community clinics. So the other two clinics are October 21st and November 5th. And those two will utilize the signup genius through the town website. So again, by appointment only, the signup will open two weeks in advance of each clinic. So for the October 21st clinic, the signup genius will open on our town website this coming Wednesday, October 7th. We have already begun to immunize the public as the vaccine is so important this year to reduce respiratory burden to people in light of COVID. So we have already gone to the two housing authority developments to immunize residents there. Our nurse Kathy Whitaker has also spent one day vaccinating homebound seniors as well, and that effort will continue as well. Today, we started the school flu clinics for in-person students. And we're doing, it'll take us about three weeks to get through all schools, given that not all students are in at the same time, but we will do, we will go to two schools each day for a course of three weeks. So we did have quite a number of students sign up, which is great, because it is mandatory this year to get a flu vaccine for all students. So that effort is underway. That's all.
Great, thanks Jen. Any questions?
Thank you for all your hard work on behalf of the town.
You're welcome.
Been quite a year.
So before you go.
Interesting, yeah.
So before you go, Jen, Mike, do we want to move up the Halloween? Agenda item number nine.
Let's do it. So I hope we're not canceling Halloween, because apparently that's the word that was on Facebook, and I got a lot of phone calls and text messages that were pretty nasty. And so hopefully, we can just put some guardrails around things, but what do you think, Jen?
Yes, so I do think Halloween can happen, or trick or treating can happen. I think Amy came up with a good plan. Amy, did you want to go over that, since you were the creator of that? And I'm assuming you use the CDC guidelines to draft that, right?
I did, I did, thank you. And the American Association of Pediatrics as well, which are pretty aligned anyway. I'm happy to, if you want. I think that when I saw, sorry, I just swallowed wrong, so if I cough, it don't, nothing's going on here. We, you know, I think it's really critical as we think about the cold weather setting in, that we give kids some normalcy, and I think Halloween is one of those times that I think is important that we really think about it. But at the same time, I think based on the CDC guidelines and the American Association of Pediatrics, we can do trick or treating in a safe way with a couple of small adjustments. So, you know, my thinking is providing some guidelines to the citizens of Winchester so that, you know, there are some common, there's a common understanding of what it takes to do this safely. And I think, you know, understand, also helping homeowners understand that there's an opt-in and an opt-out, and if they don't want to participate, that's totally fine. You know, I think that's always been true of Halloween. If you don't want to participate, you don't turn your light on. I think that that would be the same, a similar thing that we could do. So Jen, I'd love to hear, I sent over to Mike and Jen and Lisa earlier this afternoon, just my thoughts on a plan, looking at both the CDC recommendations and also looking at a couple of other towns around locally, but also around the country and what they're looking to do. So I'd love to hear, I mean, again, I'm not an expert on this, I just think that with a couple of things, including timing. So I think if we can give some structure around what time people are trick or treating, and if we even break it up according to age. So if we, if we, I looked at the sunset is supposed to happen at 5:30, 8 PM on October 31st this year. And so if we link about 5:30 to 6:30, and we think about the young kids, you know, six and under, going out between 5:30 and 6:30, they'll still have some daylight. And then, you know, going between, you know, seven and 12, and then 13 and up, and hoping that we can, you know, encourage those maybe 15 and up to maybe not trick or treat this year. So those are some of the things I was thinking about. The other piece of it is to look at the way that the candy is distributed. So if we're, if we're trying to discourage people the way that the candy is distributed. So if we're, if we're trying to discourage people from going to the door, you know, could we do? I've seen some things like driveway tables where people pre-assemble the candy and people can grab it and go. And certainly booing, which is something that has been a Winchester tradition since we moved here. Um, I think really encouraging that because that's a low contact way to celebrate Halloween as well. Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, I think you hit on some key points, Amy, in terms of discouraging large crowds. Obviously we don't want large gatherings. Uh, that's, that's one thing we really need to minimize. And, and I would, you know, I would say that especially among the teen group, I'd be very, I'd be very careful about, you know, activities with that age group because we do want school to continue to be successful. And so if there's a way to, to keep trick or treating or Halloween activities at night to particular age group, that would be, that would be ideal, um, not to discourage, um, you know, not to discourage activities. But we certainly don't want any large gatherings that might thwart the school process. So, um, and also minimizing contact, I think was a great idea. While it's not as fun, certainly laying your candy out prepackaged on a table or in a bowl somehow would minimize contact with the home. The person giving out the candy and the trick or treaters. And then also I think you had sticking to your household only and, or was it a, a crowd size, Amy?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I think, um, you know, no groups larger than six, if you're going with friends. Unless you're from the same household, I think that that would, um, that would help. And I also focus on page two. I don't know, Lisa, if you want to go down. I know, you know, traditionally the flats are a pretty popular place to, um, to trick or treat. And so I don't know where the map went, but, um, oh, my arrows got moved. It's okay. Excuse me. I was just thinking that, you know, creating, um, kind of routes for the flats so that if there are odd numbered houses, you walk towards Church Street. If you're, they're even number, you walk towards Wildwood, just to kind of keep a flow going so that there's not a ton of crowding and passing opposite directions. So nothing, uh, nothing crazy, but I think this hopefully could help keep everyone safe and allow trick or treating to happen.
Is that what you think?
I, I, first of all, I thank you so much, Amy, for all your hard work. I mean, this is, this is really so much thought process into this. And obviously with the health of everyone involved. You know, I don't know if like sort of grids for every neighborhood is something that you were thinking about. Also, you know, to the extent that people sort of go over or under these time periods, if that's an issue. Maybe these are just sort of intended to be kind of like suggestions or something.
Yeah, I don't think that there's any way to regulate these things. I think those are more guidelines than anything. But I think if we can communicate them and, and, you know, again, I think everyone, everyone's priority in town is that school continues as is. I think we all feel like it's gone really well and our kids are happy to be in school. And so I think if that's the, that's the ultimate bar is to keep, keep our kids in school. And eventually, hopefully, fingers crossed, um, you know, go into school more over time. So I think if that's the, if that's the baseline, um, I think, you know, people are willing to make some adjustments. But again, I'll reiterate, I just, I mean, I have little kids and I just, I think it's really critical that they have a little bit of, a little bit of fun this fall as we start to approach winter where a lot of us are going to be inside a lot. So, yeah, I think, you know, these are, we don't have to do any, we don't have to adopt any of these per se. I just thought about it and thought about some of the concerns that I've seen over the years, trick or treating in Winchester. And I thought that some of these might, might help.
Yeah. I would also note that booing is awesome and it's been going on for probably like at least 30 years. It can, you know, I think it's, I don't know if we want to say the town endorses it. I, I think we just let it happen on its own. I mean, there are, some people may think there's issues about it, but in any event, I, I don't know if we want that to necessarily be part of the policy. We're not, certainly not discouraging it, but I don't know if we want to necessarily say endorses.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I think it's more of like a suggestion of a low contact way to celebrate. I understand there's other, you know.
Yeah. I mean, I, it's
if you don't get booed, but.
So, um, and I'm okay with requiring masks. I think the rest would be, I think for the Board of Health to issue guidelines of what they should do. I, I don't think we should issue something that says that we're not permitting people of, of specific ages, whether they can trick or treat or not. Or, you know, I, I don't think we have the, the ability to, to permit or not permit things like that. But I think we should, um, uh, we should require masks for anybody who is trick or treating. That's, and, and the rest can be guidelines.
I totally agree. I think in my like case to get this out, I think permitting and endorsing are two words that I probably, I don't believe, nor do I think we have the authority to do that. I just think that we should suggest, although maybe, you know, to avoid crowds. If 15, 16, 17 year olds want to trick or treat versus going to a big party, maybe that's preferable. So maybe we don't even mention it. It's fine with me. These are just some thoughts.
Yeah, I would guess that parents are looking for some guidelines and some thoughts about how to do this properly and would, you know, welcome suggestions. And, uh, you know, I'm glad, you know, thank you for thinking all this through. And, um, you know, I, I could certainly support working with the, with the Board of Health to kind of give people some guidelines and encourage them to do this safely.
I agree with Mr. Golubov that it seems appropriate to come from the Board of Health.
So do we want to recommend this guidance subject to those changes?
I think we just, I mean, I honestly, like, I'm happy to just, Jen, if you want, I'm happy to give you this if you want to take it. I, I don't need this to be a select board decision. I just wanted to put some thoughts out there based on what I've seen. And some of the, and this, again, the CDC, I just, I just wanted to make sure that I, I just wanted to put some thought behind it. But Jen, honestly, if you want to just take this and go with it and make the suggestions that you feel appropriate, I'm fine with that too. I don't think we need to do anything formal.
The only other piece that, you know, I would mention too is because Halloween is on a Saturday this year, there may be a lot more social events that are kind of localized to, you know, more like smaller block parties and things like that. But just, um, the guidance that we do send that, send out, as long as it's reminding people of where we are with gatherings and publicly and privately and you know, that's, I, I think especially with things being kind of a moving target and changing, you know, through the governor's orders. I think a lot of people are confused of what the limitations are. So as long as we remind them of that, I think that that's helpful too. Okay.
Sure. So I could finalize, I could ask if the board members have any further input and we can finalize some guidance and get it out to the public.
Yep. And just to make it clear that we're not canceling Halloween, it's just, we don't, really don't have that kind of authority anyways, even if we wanted to, but, but thank you. Any, any other questions or comments? No? Okay. We'll move on to our next agenda item. Uh, thank you Jen, um, for all your work and coming in tonight to give us an update on these things. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda is a public hearing for the Eversource grant of location. When I think that our town engineer Beth Rudolph is here. So we'll, we'll open the public hearing. And Jacqueline Duffy is here as well. Eversource.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Okay, this is Beth.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Um, so yes, as you mentioned, Jackie Duffy appears to be joining the meeting involved from Eversource. Eversource has submitted a grant allocation petition for the installation of approximately 23 feet of conduit in Church Street to provide electric service to the existing house at 121 Church Street. Engineering and DPW have reviewed this request and don't have any concerns and recommend that the board vote favorably for it. Thank you.
Okay, any? I see that Jackie Duffy is still connecting to audio. I don't know if Jackie, if there's anything you wanted to say, if you can hear us, but we will, we will wait, you know, for you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm on. Yes, we just want to install 23 feet of conduit on Church Street, 121 Church Street.
Okay. I don't know if there are any members of the audience that are here and have questions or comments about this granted location request. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Um, are there any comments or questions from members of the select board?
I'm just, uh, this is Amy Shapiro. I'm just wondering what the timing is. When will this happen and how long will it take?
So, sorry. Go ahead, Jackie.
It shouldn't take.
No, I was just gonna say, and yep, I'm gonna agree that it shouldn't take that long.
And as soon as I release it to construction, they can put it on the schedule.
We do have the November 15 street opening moratorium, but typically work like this that takes, you know, a day or less. If they aren't able to do it by the November 15 deadline, as long as the weather holds, we typically allow this type of work to go forward for a few more weeks.
Are you looking for a motion at this point?
Yeah, as long as there are any other questions or comments.
So I move that we grant, we approve a grant of location for Eversource to install approximately 23 feet of conduit within the public brighter way, which will also require repairing the town owned sidewalk as necessary to provide underground electrical service to the home at 121 Church Street.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Uh, thank you Beth and thank you Jackie.
Thank you.
Beth, did you have anything else that you're on for?
I think that was it. Unless you had anything you needed before.
No, I know you're, you're rushing to get to the, um, watch the Patriots game. So we'll.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks again. Um, so we'll move on and we're going to jump around and back to the election warrant. I think, uh, Vera Ellenland, our town clerk is here. Is that right? Maybe not.
Um, I don't see her on, but I know she had a, um, a vote that she sent to us. Susan can read it.
Yeah, she did. Um, she actually has two. Um, first is on the warrant itself. And I move to officially accept and sign the state election warrant for the statewide election to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, at all local polling places stated in the warrant between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero.
And then the second one is on the early voting location. Um, I move that we designate the Winchester Town Hall Winchester Room as the official polling place for local early voting as set forth in the schedule provided to the select board by the Winchester Town Clerk.
Second.
All in favor, um, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
So I'll vote yes, but I, I do want to point out to everybody listening that, um, you know, November 3rd is not the day of the election. November 3rd is the day that the election ends. What we're approving here is for early voting to start Saturday of next week. So that's October 17th. Every single day until the last Friday in October. So from the 17th to the 30th, that's when the election is happening. It ends on November 3rd, but you can vote starting, uh, Saturday of next week, uh, October 17th, as well as by mail. Uh, but in person, if you want to vote in person, you can start doing so as early as next week. Yes.
The last day to vote is November 3rd.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I don't know where I left off there. Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Did Mary Ellen need anything else from us for the election warrant or anything? I didn't see anything. So.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sure that Mary Ellen will have the schedule up on the website. There are different hours for all of these early voting days, but thank you, Mariano. They do start very soon and it's for two full weeks. You can vote early.
Okay. We'll, um, jump back up on our agenda to the town manager's report. We have a appointment to make for that Lisa has, has to make.
Yep, we actually have a few. Um, so in accordance with section four dash two B of the town charter, I made the following full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works Highway Department, Paul Meany of Wilburn to the Highway Maintenance Division and requesting to waive the 15 day appointment period.
So I move that we waive the 15 day appointment period for the appointment of Paul Meany to the DPW Highway Maintenance Division.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Okay, the next one is Amy promotional full-term appointment in the Department of Public Works Water and Sewer Department to Peter Dicku Bellis from Wilburn to a W-15 general foreman, also asking to waive the 15 day appointment period.
So I move that we waive the 15 day appointment period for, uh, general foreman promotion, promotional appointment for Peter Dicku Bellis.
Again.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Okay, so, uh, this is certainly a lot to go through, but, um, and some of this might be repetitive, but I've, this is just a list of the various projects, the ones that have been complete, the ones that are going out to bid, um, the ones that are designed phase. So these are, um, to be, um, part of your written record for the select board meetings. But if you have any particular questions about a particular project, certainly let me know. But you should have all received this and this will be part of the public record. It was already mentioned in person, early voting and the flu clinics. I just want to mention that the micro enterprise grant that we got for 140,000, right now we have nine applicants that have requested the full maximum of $10,000 each for phase one. We are now in phase two, so we'll have at least $50,000 available. Um, I say this because we haven't vetted the nine yet to see if they're all eligible. So if for some reason one is not, then, um, then we might have more funding available. So a couple of things about phase two, um, the closing date is October 23rd. It's the same online portal. Um, the links are all up on our website. As before, the income requirements are the same except for, um, we've been able to have them accept projected fiscal year 20 versus a previous year income. So if folks looked at their last tax returns and they didn't qualify, but they've had a significant drop in income for this year. Um, and they believe that their projected income for this year would have them fall in that category, then they should definitely, um, they should definitely apply. We have, we have funds. We, we hate to see it go to waste. And we want to make sure that people take advantage of this. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna share one more. The last part of my update is to give you the additional, um, six written comments. Two are by the Housing Partnership Board. So essentially from five different entities on the water field lot development proposals. As you know, we've had, um, an extensive process in terms of an RFQ. As you know, we've had an extensive process in terms of an RFQ, RFP. We've had interviews that have all been on live on Wind Cam. We've had questions that we asked developers to answer that have all been posted online. We asked developers to create the videos. Those have all also been posted on our website. So the public hearing you had at the last meeting was also public. So the last sort of piece of information that we're gathering is just the written comments that were due to our town planner last Thursday. So as you can see, there's, you've all received this in your packet, but there's, there's various recommendations here. Without trying to reword these recommendations, I will say that the majority of these did make a recommendation. So the recommendation for most of them was for the town to enter into negotiations with Civico. And there was one recommendation for, for Penrose. So that's just the six written comments and you, of course, have received other comments via, via the public hearing that we had last, last meeting. So I just wanted to go, you know, further into any detail that the board is looking for. We've had mass housing, look at, they did the financial review of the project proposals, so those have been vetted. We've looked at development companies. So those have been vetted as well. And again, there's various questions that you've all had that we've received written answers for. So at this point in time, as we sort of near the final stretch to make a decision, I just want to see what else the board might want us to do to finalize the vote, if you want us to create, you know, a ranked choice worksheet. If you still have questions after receiving all this information that you want us to track down.
Well, I just say thank you for all that you have collected and done already. The financial analysis and comparison, I think, was really helpful. So I can't think of anything else.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I echo what Susan has to say. I think there's been a tremendous amount of work by staff on on this parcel offline that we've been trying to get developed for, I don't know, over a decade probably. And I, it's, it's really encouraging the progress and the quality of the submissions that we've gotten and a lot of that is because of the process that was set in place, so just, yeah. I do have a question, not related to Waterfield, so, but I can keep it for later.
Okay, so I mean, that's, that's my update. So if you want to ask me a question on something else, please.
Yeah, I have a question on what's going on with Eversource, because it seems like they are taking a very long time on their existing construction for the 115 line. And I know that the city council in Woburn has requested Eversource to answer for why they are taking such a long time on Washington Street between Montvale and Winchester line. And Eversource has been completely ignoring Woburn and so I, I, I'm not sure if there's anything in our, in our contract with them for the 115 line that related to the timeline and how long they can keep the same block closed. It seems like they've kept the same block of Wildwood closed for a month now or longer. So I'm not sure what's going on and how we can get them to speed it up.
So this would certainly be a question that I could use Beth Rudolph assistance if we want to take her away from the Patriots game, but so I know that she and Jay have regular meetings with Eversource on project update meetings. So what I can do is I can find out more about their project status and we can also make similar inquiries about their timeline.
Yeah, that would be great. And also, you know, what do they intend the timeline for the 345 line to be? And I mean, maybe given this experience that we need to have a performance clause there that they cannot close the same section of street for longer than certain period of time and a penalty if, if they do per day that they keep it closed.
Okay.
Thanks, Mariano. So you'll get back to us on that, Lisa?
Yeah.
Did you have other items? Are there any other questions for Lisa from members of the board? Okay. So we'll move on then to matters from the audience. I don't know if there are any matters from members of the audience that are otherwise not on our agenda. Please raise your hand or let me know. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Lisa, I'm gonna just kind of take them in order from this point on. We won't be dealing with the clerical union MOU until our next meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll move into business item two, which is the brave act of 2018.
Give me one moment, I'm just gonna bring that up. Okay, so this is the memo that was shared with the select board last month. Actually, it's October now, so it's two months ago. So under Mass General Lodge, Chapter 33, Section 59. So towns can pay one of their employees that is, or not one, but any employee that's serving in their military service obligations, either drills or training. Basically, the difference between what they're making in the military and the compensation that they would have received in, in the town, so it's, let's see, the difference between the base pay he may receive for such service and the regular rate of compensation for the town for a period of not more than 17 calendar days of military leave and, and his or her annual tour of duty. So we do currently have one employee that this, this actually applies to right now. The, when we looked into whether we could adopt this, this provision, we saw that the, the town has actually never accepted the statute initially, and then since we've been in conversations with, you know, our Veterans Commissioner and the union and other folks, the governor actually changed the law, so there's 17 calendar days, it's actually now 40, 40 days. So in order for us to, you know, move forward with any compensation, we would actually have to have town meeting accept the statute.
So does this require us to do anything tonight? Or would we just put it on the warrant and then when we vote the warrant, it would on the warrant or just, I'm just curious what you need us to do, because I would support doing this.
Yeah, this, I guess the question is, is if knowing that there's support from the select board or not, to put it on, whether it's a town manager article or it's a select board article.
We can put it forward if there's a consensus around this, having on this warrant. What does everybody think? Anybody opposed to it or have questions, concerns? Nothing? So everybody's on board if this hits the warrant?
Yes, definitely.
I mean, it's not like we would be paying anything extra and this would protect their ability to, you know, support their families, so.
Great.
But we'll add it in. Thanks, Lisa. Was, was there anything else on that item, Lisa, to, for us to discuss?
I know, just that the Veterans Commissioner also gave his staff recommendation in favor of that.
Okay, great. I see Jen Murphy is back on. Jen, did you have something else to add from when you were on earlier?
Sorry, I, I thought I was invited to give a COVID update, so only if you wanted.
Yes, I actually, that, that would be helpful. Yeah, sorry to, I know you already kind of gave a brief overview, but thanks for coming back on. Sorry about that.
No, not a problem. Can I share, am I, can I share something, a PowerPoint here? Is that possible?
Give it a try, because supposedly, since I put you as a panelist, you should be able to.
Okay.
Do you see the shared screen on the bottom?
Yep.
Okay, and it should let you do it.
Is it successful?
Yes.
That looks good.
Okay. So I could talk a lot, but I will try to keep it concise, because our overall, the, the news is, is very good, right? We're in a good place right now, but I just want to highlight a couple of things for everyone. First is, I don't know if you're aware of our, our dashboard that we have on our website, if we can go there. We did add a new table today, so I just want to bring your attention to that. Great, can everyone see this? Our data dashboard? We do update this.
No, we still see, we still see this spreadsheet.
Yeah, we see the PowerPoint.
PowerPoint.
Oh, yeah, we see the PowerPoint, but.
If you go, if you, if you click on it, it should open up, because we're seeing your screen.
Yeah, so I see it, that's, okay.
Well, I think you only shared the application, PowerPoint, not the whole, probably not the whole screen, so. But we can all open it on our own computers.
Okay. What about now?
No, you're sharing the application PowerPoint, you're not sharing the whole screen or your browser, so we can't see the.
Yeah, sorry, I thought it would, I thought that would work for everyone. Yeah, Lisa, do you want to share it?
Yeah, I can't, so I can't share while you're sharing?
Okay.
That makes sense.
All right, well, that's, yeah.
So why don't you do that at the end? I mean, I think, we'll, we'll go through your slides and then we'll, we'll pop up the dashboard for people to see. Is that fine? Or do you have information on the dashboard we need to share?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it was on the dash, but that's okay.
We can all go to it. I'm on, I'm on the dashboard.
Are you on it?
Everybody, yeah, everybody just goes to it.
Because it really talks about where we stand currently, right? So it's, has our most up to date information here. So the data, the data dashboard is updated every day at 4:00 p.m. And we receive, basically hourly, we receive all information about positive cases from the state, but we chose to have a, a time, a consistent time daily where we would, people would know that the dashboard would be updated. And so this reflects all PCR positive people. I'm sure you've heard the terms PCR testing and antigen testing and all that. So PCR analysis for COVID is really the gold standard, and that's what the state uses when reporting positive results to, to us. And when we talk about confirmed cases. So you'll see on the dashboard, we report active confirmed cases, and currently as of today, we have seven active confirmed cases. That means seven people in town are infectious and in isolation in their homes. We have had, out of the 145 total cases to date since March, we have 130 that have recovered. And unfortunately, we did have eight deaths, six of those being from a local nursing home. We added a table in September to coincide with the school year, which breaks out the number of cases per school. And we did, as you can see, we have to date seven cases, total cases of school age children. That doesn't mean that transmission happened at school. In fact, four of those cases occurred, the people became positive before school, in-person schooling even started. And we've been lucky that there are several other cases that were actually not infectious when, when they were in school. So things look in our favor so far, and I think things overall are actually going very well. We've been doing, you know, robust contact tracing when we do have positive cases so that we contain the spread. We have a team of four nurses. Kathy Whitaker from my office oversees three nurses that we have hired as temporary nurses to do the contact tracing. And so they're charged with really all the follow-up, because from one positive case, you can have many, many close contacts. So it's important that we notify people in a timely way and get them to adhere to the quarantine process so that we can limit spread. And then we added a new table just as of today to really give people an idea over time what's going on. So if everyone's looking at this table, it's really a snapshot. It'll show you all of our cases from March. And then we broke it out by month, so you could see exactly how many total confirmed cases we do receive in one month. So you'll see April was really, was really quite a busy month. We had our most cases during that time. And so it's interesting to note, though, when we adopted the, the emergency face covering order on, on April 1st, and even before that, we, we actually issued an emergency order in conjunction with the select board to, to stop all personal services like hair salons and nail salons. That happened actually at the end of, end of March. So I really do think those activities, and then the governor obviously followed our lead and did the same shortly after by mandating face coverings as well as stopping personal services and other activities. You can see the decline happen right away over the next month. So we are, we are still in a good spot. You know, people are still living their, living their lives, they're eating out, they, you know, perhaps started sports in the fall, so we have had some cases. I would not declare that we have sustained community transmission at this point. Nor did I say that we have in-school transmission, sustained transmission. So we're, we're really in a good spot right now. And I will just jump back to the PowerPoint. And if you have any questions along the way, feel free, feel free to ask me. I just want to show you the total cases that we have per age. Can everyone see the PowerPoint again?
I can see it, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. And so it's important to note, I think everyone's curious about the 0 to 19 age, age range there. And to break that out even further, so there were 17 total cases, 0 to, 0 to actually 18, I'm just giving you the, the school age kids. There were 17 total cases since, in that age group since March. And seven are among kids 10 and younger, and nine were among kids 11 to 18. And as you can see, the, the deaths that we did report were all in the older age categories. Just to look at the gender breakdown, we had more females test positive for COVID, which sort of follows national data that you see. However, in terms of illness and hospitalizations, you will see that men tend to actually suffer more. Total displayed symptoms. So basically, almost all of our cases, 80% of our cases do exhibit symptoms. And this, while the cases do have commonalities in their symptoms, it almost seems that each case has a unique feature to it. But some of the common symptoms that we hear at the outset tend to be cold-like symptoms, sore throat, runny nose, that type of, extreme fatigue is a common one, severe headache. So you'll hear recurring themes amongst our cases, but they all seem to start out a lot different. Some of our recent cases, we had just vomit and diarrhea, for example. So you really don't know how it's going to present. It's quite an interesting thing. And I don't think that people should ever hesitate, if they're worried or feeling symptomatic, to go to one of the free testing sites that the governor has and get that test. This just highlights for you the number of, or the percentage of our cases who were in fact hospitalized. 84% were not in fact hospitalized, so that's, that's probably some good news. As well as 90% of our cases were full, have fully recovered, so also more good news. And of our cases, how many were medically compromised? And it's 50/50 split, so the good news is, again, 90% of our cases recovered, so. And we talk about medically compromised, excuse me, we talk, that list has shifted over time. You know, initially, we thought that people who suffered from respiratory ailments were more likely to suffer severe illness. But now we're noticing that that list has shifted, and you'll see more illnesses, for example, cancer, chronic kidney disease, obesity. Those are some of the underlying conditions for which you may suffer more severe illness due to COVID. And then just to give you a brief snapshot again of our nursing home data, we have not had a case in a nursing home since June, so that's great. And in fact, the state has done reoccurring testing in the facilities over time, which was much needed at the outset and did in fact end up happening. And so we hope that that continues through the fall and the winter, because that's key to to knowing what, having your finger on the pulse of what's going on inside the nursing home. And that testing actually does extend to the employees, because obviously, they're the ones who are going to bring the virus potentially into the facility. And I just wanted to give you some, some data that compares some surrounding towns. And in fact, I did steal this from Lexington, they have a very robust set of tables on their website. And this is just to show you the percent of positive tests, or the positivity rate, as it's also known. And you'll see that Winchester has a positivity rate of 0.25%, so in fact, it's very low. So this shows, over a two-week period, that, and the two-week period was the two weeks preceding September 30th, so last Wednesday. Out of approximately 2,000 tests that were conducted on Winchester residents, we had five, oops, sorry, five that were positive, which equals the 0.25% positivity rate. So that is, that's great. So we had a lot of tests that were conducted amongst our residents, and I hope that continues, because that's certainly a great, a great tool to containing the virus. That information is so key. And so I think this is, this is good news overall. Others aren't in the same boat, obviously, as you can see, Woburn right nearby has a 1.78% positivity rate. And in terms of what's an acceptable positivity rate, the WHO uses 5%. I know that, which is, in my mind, that's very high, and I think we'd be, we'd be thick into it if we ever reached that, that rate. So I hope that we don't ever trend in that direction. And I think this town is in great shape right now. So I say yay for us, but let's keep, let's persevere, let's stay vigilant in all the things that we're doing, like the mask-wearing. I think it is, it is making such a difference, especially in the school setting, so that's great. And the downtown educational campaign that was started, that's also great. It's one of our denser areas in town, so it's key to wearing a mask around, around other people in that area too. So good news right now, and I hope I can come back in the future and also have good news to report.
Great, thanks, Jen. Really appreciate that thorough presentation. It does help. I know you're used to seeing all this information every day, and, but for us in the community, it's helpful to have that explanation. Are there any questions or comments for Jen?
Thank you, Jen, for all your dedication on behalf of the town. It's truly incredible, and for your great presentation.
Great, thank you. I just also, to that, to tag on to that, thank Kathy Whitaker and the team of nurses that we have. They are really key to this whole, to containing the virus in town. And I would also like to thank Jessica Fefferman, who's been a key player in assisting me as well with some COVID projects. And also, thank the town for their cooperation, because when we call to do our contact tracing, it is so important that we receive cooperation. We're not judging anybody's actions, we're not there to be critical of people's actions. We simply just need to get information, and that's really all it is. So we hope that folks will continue to cooperate with us. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jen. We won't call you back in a little while and ask you to come back on, so this is it. Thank you. So we'll move on to our next agenda item. What I have is, just moving down the list, are liquor license fees. Lisa, I know that you had a staff recommendation that you presented to the select board.
Yes, so I apologize, I didn't readily make the shareable on the screen, but this is included in your packet. So there's three sections of the recommendation. The first was sort of an analysis of the fees related to liquor licenses for wine and malt or all alcohol. So you'll see the actual businesses that have, have these licenses. And then the second section is looking at the annual revenue we received over the last five fiscal years. So there is, the numbers are not round, because it also includes $125 filing fee. So it's got the fees that you see above, which are anywhere from $2,000 to $3,500, and then it's got like the filing fee with it. So that's why you kind of see a bit of a difference and/or fluctuation from year to year. But fiscal year 20, we received just about $38,150 in revenue. And when I looked at various, there were a number of communities that either reduced the fees by 25%, 50%, or 100%. So it was, there wasn't necessarily a consensus. And all their towns are different in terms of, you know, the number of licenses they have and so on. So I do recommend that we waive the $125 filing fee. I do recommend that we reduce the fees by at least 50%. So somebody who, like, you know, the, the the $2,000 ones would be $1,000, and the $3,500s would be $1,750. So that's my minimum reduction for this year. And then, in addition to that, there's usually a $50 outdoor heating fee, heater fee. So we're, as much as possible, we're trying to extend the outdoor dining season. The heaters are expensive, so we're able to get the shared streets grants to pay for some of those. I'd like for us to waive the fee. It's still going to be expensive in terms of fuel, so some businesses are actually even hesitant to get a free heater and waive a filing fee, just because the fuel costs are significant. So I just think we need to do whatever we can to get our restaurants through this difficult season, and, you know, hope that, you know, there's a, there's a better spring ahead.
So what's the financial impact to our budget if we waive, you know, all fees and all charges? And, you know, is that, you know, or do we account for, or do we count on this revenue for any other particular departments or line items?
So we probably lose about the $40,000 that we typically get. Considering that we were very conservative in our estimates for local revenue and for state aid, there's still a net positive, like there's, you know, we underestimated the budget for state aid by, you know, over a million dollars. So there is room in here to waive this fee completely and still be more than whole in terms of where we land, revenue-wise.
I mean, I would advocate for that, just in the sense that a lot of the businesses that have remained open and really been working with us closely have, luckily, with outdoor dining, had the benefit of a very dry summer to keep their head above water. But they also had to invest in a lot of outdoor equipment, barriers, tables, things like that. And, you know, you know, at this point, you know, our, our goal should be doing whatever we can to keep existing businesses open, because it's a, it's going to be very difficult if a business goes out, we wouldn't want to see, we wouldn't want to lose any of them. But also, it would be a tough time to have a new business come in at some point. So I think it's a worthwhile investment in our existing businesses.
Yeah, my question is, does the recommendation also apply to the package stores, which never had to close?
So I didn't distinguish between package stores, clubs, or restaurants. So those are the three types of licenses that we have right now. So certainly, the board could, could consider, because it does, you're right, but the chart I provided does say that some of these have never closed in terms of their impact. You know, I haven't, I haven't really heard from them, so I've heard mostly from, you know, the restaurants.
I mean, I think whether they've, they've been able to stay open, but, you know, whether or not they're still feeling, you know, economic pressure. You know, I don't know, it still seems like that's the, that's the key. So there are some, you know, larger liquor stores, and there's some, you know, smaller ones, and I don't know how you differentiate between them, you know, their, their licenses are otherwise uniform.
Yeah, I just mean, it seems like they've, I mean, they've continued to do business pretty much as normal, right? The, the package stores, unlike restaurants or clubs who've had to close or haven't been able to serve other than outdoors or but whatever the board wants to do.
Yeah, I think it's just whether or not people are physically going, you know, if they're patronizing their, those stores in the same way that they were before, you know. I mean, I know I haven't, you know, been, you know, going to liquor stores much physically, you know, so. But certainly.
And you might say people are not entertaining as much, and, you know, having parties or anything. So that's got to be, have some impact on package stores.
Yeah.
So. I think the, sorry, Susan, I mean, I'm ready for motion, I'm totally in support of this. I think, Lisa, you don't feel like the financial implications are going to be detrimental to the town? I think I'm completely on board. And I think that, you know, the restaurants are really the pulse of the town right now. And so anything we can do to support them as we get into the colder months, I think is, makes a lot of sense.
So I guess I would move that we waive the annual liquor license fees for fiscal year 21 entirely, including the annual filing fee and the outdoor heater fee as well.
Second?
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you for putting that together, at least I know we threw that to you at the last minute, but it's really helpful to have that, that data in front of us when making decisions, especially the comparable data for other communities, for us to know what else, you know, other people are doing, so. Appreciate it.
I just add that, even though we waive the fees, we still need people to apply so that we have all their information, the insurances, especially the heater fee. I talk with fire prevention, so they would work directly with the businesses on making sure they have the right setbacks and so on.
So, you know, one of the hard parts of doing this every year is that the licenses are returned to us on kind of a unfortunate rolling basis, and a lot of the businesses are very late in, you know, returning their applications. You know, can we, Lisa, can you let them know that this waiver is, is available by, you know, as long as they're returning their, their information by a certain date, by the deadline? So I think that would certainly incentivize people to do it, if the board is comfortable with that. It's usually Jen running around, making a lot of calls and physically going places, and if we're waiving, it would be nice to not, not have that administrative burden as well. So.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. Next are on our agenda, number six, the warrant articles.
So how do you want to proceed with this, Mike? I know it's, it's changing. So when I left Town Hall earlier, it was different than the morning when I got there, so.
So I guess, you know, are there, there are questions or anything on the, you know, we can start there, I don't know if we. I didn't intend that we would necessarily go through every single one, but it's, you know, still going to change. When, when, when do we have to vote the warrant? When's the final deadline, Lisa, we know?
So this needs to be nailed down on the 16th, so we can certainly vote on this on Wednesday. And if you would like us to give a full presentation on, to the board on, oh, sorry, on Thursday, I mean, on Thursday, we can do that.
But, you know, I mean, a lot of it is I think fairly simple, but if there are other, if there are specific articles that board members want to hear a little bit more detail about, then that, you know, we can, we can jump into that.
So the, another sort of issue to work out is how to place the article that was just voted on tonight. So that was certainly not in the version that you have in front of you. Oh no, it does, sorry, it's Article 15, good, it's in there.
Yeah, I think we had put a placeholder.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, is there any other major changes or issues here? I mean, there's still some, there's still some things to be worked out. I don't know if your version has the yellow highlights, but has a couple of things to fill in, like dates. There's some specifics regarding what exactly plan the waterfield lots on, and a dollar figure.
I believe that the planning board has a lot of articles. I think their public hearing is tomorrow night. So I'd be curious to tune in to see, you know, if there's any, any major comments or controversies surrounding any of that. And then the public hearing that I'll hold will be later on this month, probably end of the month.
So maybe we could deal with the specifics on the waterfield one and the, I don't remember what the numbers are, but anything that has blanks to be filled in on Thursday? on Thursday?
Sounds good. Okay, so pick that up Thursday. Next on our agenda are the select board policies.
Right, so this this is kind of a continuation. Just a quick, you know, point out that the general goal here is to sort of create a more explicit institutional memory about how we do things. And just to have some things out there for the public as well to understand how we do things. So for a new member coming on right after the election, there'd be a list of materials that that new person would get. And also things that the town manager, the town controller thought would be useful to sort of understand the year ahead and what what it is that the board does over the course of a year. There's a change here that about all the collective bargaining agreements, I guess there's there are summaries or some or will be summaries rather than the whole, you know, forty page long legal document. And I think that would be really useful to have, you know, coming on board, not having to try to decipher all of that for all those. I think we have like five units. I think summaries would be good, but that, you know, is definitely a major part of what town government does is is administer these, you know, maintains a staff to do the services that the town residents need. So that's a big component. And I yeah, that's the only change. And you've seen this before, and I think we're all familiar with a lot of these things. And then the next one is on, I think, on collective bargaining itself. And again, that one is to sort of really orient everybody to how that process goes along. And this has changed a little bit from the last time that you saw it. Town council went through and and made some clarifying changes so that we're not making everything too inflexible or too prescriptive and too many requirements. Because if we do that, I think the town manager and those of us who are going to negotiation sessions might not have time to do anything else in a given year when there are a lot of these contracts coming up for review. It calls out a specific role for a town labor council and also for the town controller who is plays a very important role in, you know, telling the board what the financial impacts of things would be. And this would be something so that we, you know, we are one or two members, at least on major, large employee unions, large bargaining units would have a role just to be able to attend negotiation sessions and stay up to speed and understand, you know, what's going on and that the town manager would report back to the full board in executive session on a regular basis so we can stay abreast of what, how the negotiations are working out. And then down at the bottom, there's a couple of sources and references. Just to look at the, you know, always remember that what we do has to follow the the general laws and the charter, the town charter. And then the next one is, the last one is about just how we have allow public, have to have public comment at all of our open meetings, all of our public meetings under the open meeting law and just to kind of lay out the rules and expectations for everybody. I think that I went to a seminar about the open meeting law that Mary Ellen put on or invited the Attorney General's office to put on, which is really useful. And they sort of said that always remember that the open meeting law is intended to create this balance between between government efficiency and government transparency. And so this is about allowing people to come talk and share their views and perspectives, which we always want to hear. And also have enough time in any given meeting to get all of our agenda items done. So that's the gist of these three and I'm hoping that everybody is comfortable with them and we can approve these tonight.
Great. Thank you, Susan. This is a ton of work and just something that's been neglected over a long period of time and really helps everyone to be on the same page. Are there questions or comments?
No, thanks, Susan. Thanks for pulling this together. I know this was a lot. This is great. I think particularly the onboarding, I think when I coming in at the same time, that would have been really helpful. So I think will help people ramp up that much quicker. So I think that's great.
Yeah, my onboarding, when I came on was Jimmy Johnson saying, congratulations, just keep your mouth shut for six months. So and that was the training. So it's, you know, it takes a while to get going and understand. You know, all the processes, especially if you can't find it anywhere. So appreciate it, Susan. Thanks.
I remember when I went, you know, started with the school committee, I went to this day long orientation and multiple PowerPoints and I thought, okay, you know, I'm so confused. I'm not sure what to do next. So there's too much and then there's maybe not enough in this. I hope it's kind of a happy medium.
So, you know, if they're, you know, if it's the sense of the board that we can adopt these policies formally, we can take a vote to do that. I think it would make sense.
So I would move that we adopt these three policies as presented.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And yes, for me, motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thanks, Susan. That's a ton of work with a lot of other stuff going on. So appreciate it.
Glad it's done.
Number eight is the appointments to the Climate Action and Advisory Committee. So we had our interviews last week and I think Patty had circulated those the rankings. So are there any questions about that? Lisa, did we need a vote formally to appoint them?
Yeah. So in in alphabetical order, the top seven that were ranked by the board are Prasad Kalabi, Wei Chen, Rick Ino, Alan Field, Adriana Garber, Jason Roder and Ruth Trimarki.
So I move that we appoint those seven individuals to the Climate Action Advisory Committee.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Mike, can I interrupt?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
So we originally were going to look at two year and one year term, start staggering them. So I don't know if we want to randomly assign that or if you want me to sort of reach out to folks and sort of determine their availability and then I apologize, like basically formally make that recommendation to you on Thursday, not to delay the vote anymore, but I think when you're voting, I think you need to determine the length of term.
Right.
Okay, so.
I'll withdraw the motion, then we can do it on Thursday.
How many with two years and how many one year?
I think originally we said four at two and three at one, but for some reason, if like, you know, four want to do one.
Right.
Then I guess I'll have that wiggle room.
I mean, otherwise we can just go two, one, two, one, two. And make the appointments now.
Good.
You got two?
Well, these, yeah, I mean, these are in these are in alphabetical order. I mean, I think it makes sense, especially that we're meeting Thursday just to see what everyone's bandwidth is. You know, I know some people may not you know, be in town a year from now or something. I don't know.
Yeah, I like your idea, town manager, of calling, particularly those who haven't been on the board. They may kind of prefer to start with a shorter amount of time. I don't know.
So we'll pick it up Thursday. It's, I mean, at this point, it's just administrative for us anyway. So.
Yeah, we'll try not to prolong it.
Okay. All right. I'll make I'll make the calls tomorrow and I'll let you know.
Thank you. And seeing as we already addressed Halloween, we don't have to. So we can move on to next agenda item under the Equity and Anti-Racism Task Force. I didn't know if we were ready to move forward with these pieces as well.
Well, I had technical difficulties getting back into the meeting, so I had wanted to do this earlier. Looking ahead to Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day coming up this month and also Native American History Month or Native American Heritage Month in November. I wanted to do a land acknowledgement, which would go like this. Just to take one step to carry out the board's Equity and Anti-Racism Initiative, I'd like to acknowledge that we're holding this meeting on the ancestral homeland of the Massachusetts people and indigenous people who were tied by kinship to the Narragansett, Nipmuck, BoTucket, Hennecook and Wampanoag, who, along with other tribal nations, lived on these lands for thousands of years before European colonists arrived and their descendants still live among us. Winchester specifically is on land of the Song squa of Misatek, who led her people through epidemics, war and dislocations and displacement in the sixteen hundreds. She signed many land deeds in the sixteen thirties, repeatedly reserving the right to stay on the land to follow her traditional way of life. As part of the town government of Winchester, we recognize our responsibility now to be good stewards of the land. We acknowledge that many indigenous people from all over the country now live in our state and in our town and contribute to our community in myriad ways. And the thinking would be to do something along these lines, maybe shorter, on a recurring basis. It's something that other institutions have started to do and I think would be a step forward in just being truthful and understanding, building more awareness of the actual history of our town and the role of indigenous people and the Song squa of Misatek in that history.
So just to clarify, so this would be before select board meetings or town meeting?
Before select boards, I think. And then we could talk about it, I guess, with town meeting. I don't know if other town meetings do this yet. I know that in Wellesley, they're talking about, which is kind of the next idea, Wellesley, they're talking about having a town vote to change or observe the federal holiday in October that's called Columbus Day to observe that as Indigenous Peoples' Day. As people are learning more about the un-romanticized actual history of of Columbus's voyages.
Well, I think what you wrote is very interesting and historically interesting. So I mean, it's it's good to hear. I don't know about how frequent you were posing, so.
Yeah, I don't think we should need to need to do it every time, but maybe just the beginning of the year.
Great. Thanks, Susan. Yeah, I think having that on a regular basis is makes sense, especially that our audience is different on a regular basis as well. And so be worthwhile to continue to do it. Thank you for doing that. So, you know, the other agenda items, they are under our Equity and Anti-Racism Task Force are those ready for us to discuss?
Okay. One of the things I wanted to do with the board today is to sort of think about a scope of where we want to start. So these are just areas of potential work or action that have been identified. So a few things I want to sort of talk with the board about. So one is really understanding sort of exactly what we want to do and not want to do, whether we want to start with something that is you know, fairly, I would say, quick and achievable and sort of an easy first step. Or whether we want to dive into something that's a lot more comprehensive. So what you see here in terms of these eight framework issues is, I would say, the lot more comprehensive. It is not yet action focused, but it it is a lot of work in terms of identifying stakeholders, understanding you know, the existing frameworks that exist, talking about the language, doing a full assessment of the town in terms of things that might create structural racism. So I can certainly go into these, but broadly speaking, it's there's many different ways we could go into this. So this is sort of developing a very comprehensive framework that then leads to action. There are certainly things the board can do to say, let's just, you know, maybe jump into one or two action items and then build support and go from there. The state had a training grant that we opted not to apply for that was very training focused. So it was like you identify, I think, eight or ten core team members. And then those eight or ten people go through, I want to say like a hundred and seventy five hours of training. So we opted not to do that because that that wasn't as inclusive as we wanted. Training is great, but we wanted maybe more comprehensive training. And we also maybe wanted to kind of look at some action steps and also you know, a lot of the the potential stakeholders that we would work with, you know, they just, especially the nonprofits or volunteers, they just didn't have a hundred and seventy five hours to like just have training as part of that grant. So part of this may be initiating discussion about the starting point where we want to go and then, but even just looking at these eight things here, you know, for guidance. So I think you're all reading. Do you want me to maybe go through these one by one? Okay, so the first one is raising awareness and familiarity with the frameworks, values, language and goals of anti-racism. So the Network for Social Justice has actually done quite a bit of work around this. I'm not as familiar with exactly what they've done. I actually participated in their last round, the third session only because the first two sessions actually coincided with meeting nights that we had. And they just sort of announced like a framework of, I think, three more meetings that are going to dive deeper into this. But the one that I was at kind of summarized the first two. Everybody kind of came up with some potential action steps and there was a lot of discussion around. So the actually number eight, which is having people understand the importance of language and how to, you know, how to have actually how to have conversations in order to do things like number eight. The second is to look at the current state of town government from a racial justice and equity perspective. As you can see, there's a lot of things here, personnel, zoning, governance policies. You know, the way we behave or laws, just the structure of government in itself. Certainly hiring is hiring promotion. That's kind of an easy, easy one to understand in terms of looking at numbers and whether there's things we can do to change in terms of creating a more diverse pipeline. You know, some of these are, I think, are a lot more difficult. Like zoning and regulations requires a lot of work, town meeting. Like zoning and regulations requires a lot of work, town meeting. And we're also dealing with sort of larger, you know, potential market or economic forces that create the structure of inequity in our socioeconomic system. But again, there are still things that we can do to address that here. The third is just looking at how issues of race and inequality present themselves throughout the town. So this obviously would involve a lot of outreach to individuals and, you know, some sort of framework for sort of examining those particular, you know, incidents. So number four is talking about an anti-racism task force. The town is, I don't know if the town has ever had a human rights commission, but I know that on the sort of some of the recent town manager threads, everybody's sort of asking each other who's got, who's got one and whether folks are contemplating putting something like that in place. But we don't have a human rights commission, we don't have an anti-racism task force. So whatever we call it, there's not necessarily an easy easy place to direct particular issues to. So you know, it doesn't have to be an anti-racism task force, it could be shaped differently, but serve here for kind of a placeholder for some sort of structure that both can temporarily guide the project or some sort of structure that ends up in a more permanent basis. Number five is working with other social justice and community-based organizations. So you know, I mentioned the network, but there's a number of other great organizations in town that are contributing towards anti-racism and wanting to be part of something. So number six is articulating that shared values, principles, and goals that will guide the work of whatever's created, the task force, town government. So it would be sort of the goals, the pathways, action steps, what's the accountability? How do we measure those things? Number seven is to look at the town's government organizational structure in itself. So and then the seventh, sorry, the eighth one is the glossary of shared language. So doing something like like this is probably in the tens of thousands of dollars range. You know, we would to hire consultant, we'd be working with organizations both locally and regionally to help us with some of these things. We would be recruiting volunteers. So this is certainly the larger, you know, you know, sort of work that that at some point probably needs to be done versus just jumping into like a project or two. But there's also a benefit too of starting just to do some training, to build buy-in or, you know, work on a couple of projects that we can also think will bring buy-in. Because one of the things that I do worry about with potentially jumping into something comprehensive without thinking it through too carefully is that we end up having the same people at the table. And it might not necessarily be reflective of all the different opinions that are in town. Because I think we don't just want to find like-minded people and put them together. I think we really want to make sure that all voices are heard. So there's, so we can sort of do a little bit of each too. We can say, let's do some of the, you know, maybe let's just work with the community-based organizations and, you know, try to, you know, build some projects that have, you know, that bring in buy-in and have those spaces that have the community dialogue as well to to start articulating things specific to Winchester.
So Lisa, you know, I would be more comfortable absorbing all this by reading it first. So thank you for walking me through and walking us through. I'm thinking, and this is just kind of thinking out loud, that we would might want to start with some combination of five, which is working with other existing organizations on task eight, to sort of develop how we're going to talk about what we're doing and to talk about what structural racism is or institutional racism, because I think just the word anti-racism or the word racism can elicit an emotional reaction in people that is not constructive. And once we sort of understand that we're not talking about individuals intentional actions here so much as kind of the legacy of how our, you know, how we got where we are now might be the way to start and then identify a way to kind of bring that outward in in terms of some kind of project or some kind of task force. The thing that also comes to mind, you know, we are, we just spent a considerable amount of time talking about the planning board and the master plan and housing and affordable housing. And I'm thinking maybe people in town would be interested as instead of talking about structural racism directly, kind of take a sort of oblique approach and talk about redlining and how suburbia, suburban towns like Winchester exist partly because there are other areas that we're not invested in and where people of color are now living. You know, the Boston area is pretty classic example or glaring example of what we think of as kind of accidental or just, you know, what do they call it, de facto segregation or segregated housing or people of different colors living in totally different areas. But in fact, the government and the New Deal government programs and then the GI Bill government programs actually did, you know, the government did use racial categories to guide investment, which is something kind of us learn in school or very few of us learn in school. And we're all learning as adults and saying, how did this happen? You know, so that might be something to consider, just sort of getting a group of you know, some of us and town management and some existing organizations, probably including the Network for Social Justice, I can think of maybe a couple others and saying, you know, maybe we want to start a community conversation about that.
I think too, at some point, you know, the number two on the list here is important for us to just take an inventory and take a look at what exists and what's in place. And so we, you know, are able to move beyond, you know, the kind of theoretical and there's probably some low hanging fruit for us. I know just, you know, being the network board and going to a lot of their sessions, a lot of meetings, you know, there's there's certainly, I think, a lot of residents that want to move the conversation forward and the education piece is important, but also taking that next step, you know, of implementation and, you know, trying to make sure that our our structure and our policies reflect the values of the community, where we want to be in years to come. I mean, it's our hiring practices, you know, I think it, you know, need to be evaluated as well. And it's not a question of whether things are wrong, but are there things that we could be doing better, you know? So again, when we're taking an anti-racist position, it's very much different than being just not racist, you know, it's it's kind of fixing the structural problem that's there. So you know, if we're committed to doing that, which I think we should be, there's, you know, some some harder work and there's some investment in it. I know, you know, once we put that static item on our agenda, I had a couple staff members ask, like, do we have a racism problem in Winchester? Why is that there? And it wasn't being critical from my perspective, it was people that that don't live in town, you know, that, you know, work in a specific, specific setting, has seen our agenda and was really wondering what our role is in, you know, in anti-racist process. So I think that making making a place where where we can have these conversations, but but move forward as well. So it's not just so ethereal.
Yeah, I think this is an opportunity too to take a step back and determine, you know, what do we want Winchester to be? And I think, you know, diversity does not equal inclusion all the time. Inclusion is a behavior change and it's a it's a, you know, we want every single person in Winchester to feel like they belong and that they have a voice in what we're doing and that they that they have a seat at the table if they want one. And that's what I think I would want for Winchester. And so I just want to be careful that we're not. There's probably some low hanging fruit, but I also think that we need to look at what we want to measure. To your point, I don't remember what number it was. Lisa, but really kind of before we start doing things, I think we need to take a firm look at what we want our the measurement to be, the metrics. And at a larger level, this is an opportunity to really define what we want Winchester to be as a town. And I think we would want to be, we would want to be inclusive for everyone. And that just certainly means anti-racism. It also could mean, you know, socioeconomic, it could be mean, you know, things like people that grew up here versus didn't. I mean, there's a lot of different factors where people may feel a little bit less, less than. And so I think that's just another, I mean, it's a bigger project probably than you're wanting to to get into right now. But I just wanted to put that out there because I think it's, it's, we're at an important crossroads right now in the country everywhere, but certainly in Winchester too. And I think this is awesome that we're talking about it and that that we're taking some firm, firm steps. But I just think we're also have an opportunity to think of what we want Winchester to be for for years to come, for every single person that lives here. So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what, you know, I'm trying to think of what specific like actions or goals, but you know, I think we need a way to acknowledge that, you know, the decades of systemic racism that got us to where we are today. Winchester is not a diverse town and a lot of that is based on on decades of explicit racism, of not allowing people to purchase homes or to get mortgages in certain communities. You know, the the fights of the seventies, including Metco and things like that. And I think those things need to be acknowledged, actively acknowledged in some way. I'm not sure how to do it in a way that doesn't turn negative. So, but I think that that's something that we need to explore is how do we acknowledge the systemic issues that got us here without putting people on the defensive. It's not about putting people on the defensive, but it's about acknowledging why, you know, part of the reasons that we are where we are.
I think the question, Lisa, too, is, you know, are we engaging in, you know, some work from consultants, from people? I mean, it's hard for us to wrap our head around all of the, you know, taking an inventory, seeing where we are, you know, how do we repair what's there and how do we bring the community along? You know, there are people that are that that do this very thing, you know, so it it seems to me rather than trying to poke around ourselves that, you know, it makes sense for us to commit financially to this work.
So just some logistics, you know, in terms of bringing on a consultant, from a procurement standpoint, the town would have to sort of work on a document like this and then seek, depending on the on the on the cost estimate. So with up to $10,000 would be best practices. Between $10,000 and $50,000, I would have to articulate what we want in writing and then seek rewritten quotes. And then with the best eligible there. And then over $50,000 is another story, is a whole big process for that.
Lisa, I've seen some RFPs come through my office that are for towns looking for DEI training more, but but similar, maybe not as, not anti-racism particularly, but more on DE and I, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'm happy to share some of the ones that I've seen for some language. Yeah, and I'm happy, Lisa, I'm happy to work with you on this. I mean, we do, just in full disclosure, my my company, we do inclusion, diversity and inclusion training and consulting. So I'm happy to help out in any way that I can. I won't charge you.
So what, I mean, what makes sense? So Amy can share some examples with me to put, you know, basically put the summary of what we're looking for together so we can get quotes that are fitting on the same thing. You know, I just highlighted in blue here some of the things that I think stuck out to some of you that I could articulate a little bit more fully. So is that, that seem like the next step is for me to develop that sort of written summary of what we're looking for, have the board take a look and then put it out on the street and see who we get?
I guess.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, this this is going on around us. So it's not, you know, it's a good time.
And with the task force, the anti-racism task force number four, would it potentially be? What would be the order of that? Like, should that be kind of set up? Or maybe we already kind of have one to be involved in the kind of examination of possible consultants or?
Yeah, so we don't have one. So it's sort of like getting a consultant to help us.
Okay, so you think it's 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 better to start with a consultant than vice versa? Okay, just curious.
Yeah, I mean, unless if the board feels strongly that we should go ahead and set up an anti-racism task force first and then get them to, that task force would be the ones to hire the consultant. That's one way to do it. Because I guess the other, you know, if I'm putting this out, like, I guess my office could manage it and, you know, certainly informally bring some people together. But if you wanted a little bit more formal, we wanted to kind of bring people together from a larger, more diverse group first and then have them, you know, work on this scope a little bit more. We can do that.
I mean, I kind of defer to you, but I think in other instances, we have sort of committees or task force who then kind of weigh in on some of the, I don't know, sort of priorities that they think are particularly at issue, you know, in the town or something, and then use that to sort of help evaluate, you know, what other, you know, what consultant options might be. But, you know, I totally recognize that I certainly have nothing against what you were proposing. I just wanted to ask what kind of order you were thinking. So.
So it could certainly be a task force set up very similarly to the temporary task or sorry, the temporary committee that created the updated climate action plan, where they're there for a specific purpose. So any thoughts I could put together a proposal for that task force that we can look at and then start recruiting members for that? And I could also, you know, start drafting up, you know, these written, you know, quotes too, for them to look at.
I think too, you know, I mean, my only concern is that, you know, speaking with consultants and looking at, you know, this kind of work a lot, that it's very specific and there are very specific ways to go about doing it. And if we're setting up a task force of just well-intentioned people, you know, and then we start the process, first of all, it's going to take a lot longer. And it's going to be a little bit more difficult to manage outcomes for us. I mean, I would intend that. I mean, I would intend that the schools are involved as well. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a really major thing for us to kind of go in and look at everything that we do, how we do it, you know, how we've been doing it for years and start to unravel that in a way where we can move it forward. And I think everybody value-wise probably is in the same place. But knowledge-wise, I don't know. I mean, I think it would be difficult to, to set up the task force without the professional assistance with that. I don't know. I mean, that's just my perspective.
Yes, I defer to you, Lisa. When we were setting up the, you know, for the town master plan, we developed our, our committee first and then an executive committee of the, of the larger committee. And then that committee was very instrumental in interviewing consultants. But I totally defer certainly to the comments of the chair and to you. So whatever you think, I just wanted to ask. Thanks.
Well, Lisa, did you want to kind of hammer out some more of this? And I think that's kind of where we were.
Yeah.
And then try to, try to see how we can get where we need to go.
Absolutely. You know, I am definitely looking for more direction and inclusion. I just, I just don't want this to be, you know, a town manager deciding these things. I think this, there's, you know, whether it's a, you know, subcommittee of select board members or one or two that want to volunteer to help, or I, you know, I just keep, we've got this as an ongoing agenda item. So just keep bringing it back to the board for updates and input.
Well, at certain points, going to take some investment. So we've got to move forward in a way that's, you know, within our intended means, you know? And certainly when we look at our, the money we receive through the pilot payment through the hospital, that money is generally intended for public health kind of stuff, you know? And, you know, I would put this in that context as well. And so I think it's appropriate in that sense. And it's not that we want to rush to spend that money, but I think that we want to make it, you know, work in the best way possible for the town now that we've identified a, a need and an objective.
Okay. So if I put something together, then we can do is we can share it as per the packet. So it's public, a public document that people can look at, comment on, you know, send me questions or comments. But we can also, you know, start looking at those lists of CBOs and other organizations that we want to align with and also send it to them for their input. So it doesn't, again, have to be like formal task force, but we can just put it together and, you know, get, get broad-based input.
Great.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. So moving on, we have a consent agenda item here to approve James Edwards as a special municipal employee for fiscal year 2021.
So I didn't have any questions on that. So.
Okay.
So I would move that we approve the consent agenda and the approval of James Edwards as a special municipal employee for fiscal year 2021.
I can't.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion carries unanimously five to zero. Is there anything else that we need or that we missed?
Yeah, just, just that I am not sure we heard back from everybody about the meeting on Thursday. I think since we're taking some important votes, I just want to maybe include Patty. Do we have a proposed time that we're looking at on Thursday? Because I know you've got to post it tomorrow.
No, we don't. Just that I know that Jackie and Susan and Amy can do it after two o'clock on Thursday. So.
So Mariano and Mike, I have to put you on the spot with your schedules, but.
Yeah, I'm just trying to look at my schedule here. So after two o'clock on Thursday?
Yeah.
I could do.
8:00 PM.
I could do at two o'clock for an hour or else after 5:00 PM.
I could do two o'clock.
But we've added a lot of items on the list. So.
Well, I mean, we just have to start moving through stuff. I mean, it's just, I mean, we can't just have meetings every day. I mean.
Yeah, the climate action, yeah, community appointment would be quick. I think.
Yeah.
Waterfield would be quick.
Yes.
So, so two o'clock on Thursday? Does that work?
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks, everyone. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
All right. Yes, for me, motion carries unanimously five to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Patty. Thank you, WinCam. We'll see you Thursday.